You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 18th meeting for the Michigan City Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Dixon, can you do a roll call please?
Absolutely. Chairman Vincent?
Present.
Vice Chair Raina?
Present.
Commissioner Manning?
Present.
Commissioner Greer?
Present.
Commissioner Wallace? Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Wallace is absent. Commissioner Fly? Please let the record reflect that Mr. Fly is absent.
For present, we have a quorum. The commission would give a chance to look over the minutes for August 21st. Any questions? No questions or corrections? Yeah. A motion go through?
So moved. Stop it.
Ms. Dixon, roll.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Raina? Commissioner Manning?
Aye.
Commissioner Greer?
Aye.
Ms. Benner. On Chairman's opening remarks, I just want to remind the members of the board that if you get emails or correspondence from residents, to forward those to Ms. Dixon because it's not our place to take care of the day-to-day complaints and there may be facts and details that we wouldn't know about on that email. Ms. Dixon will be glad to do an investigation on that and keep us each informed on what's going on without regards to complaints, emails, phone calls, et cetera. Residents, same thing. If you have a complaint or concern, please get ahold of the housing authority down here. Either the receptionist can direct you to the right person or call down and talk to the right person. Please don't call the board numbers because we are not into the day-to-day. We can't solve any issues. That all goes through the housing authority down here at the office. Thank you. Any public comments? Any public comments? Should we move on to reports?
So for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, Ms. Miranda is not in today. So we have her report. The utilization for the program is, it has been on the decline as you are aware. We took applications, which is probably the highlight of the report. We did take, I believe it was 995 applications in the month of August. We performed a lottery through our software system that selected 500 applicants that were placed on the HCV waiting list. You'll see on the list that there's 500. The other numbers are a representation of people who were already courtly required to the applications being taken. So in addition to those 500, we have a few people that are eligibility status. A few vouchers, four vouchers were issued. We have five people that were searching. We have one that expired and we did have 54 applicants that were withdrawn from the waiting list. That number makes it excessive as you would call us saying over however many months. The waiting list was old. It hadn't been taken, I want to say, in quite a few years. And so it's very normal for when you have an old waiting list that you lose contact with people and then they don't respond. It went on a good note. This isn't office activity, but we have already pulled 25 people from the new waiting list, from the 500. So we are working to get those numbers for the voucher program listed. I'm also happy to report out of the 25 applicants that we scheduled appointments with, 23 paying in. And so that's much different when you have a fresh waiting list and you have addresses and so forth that are recent. So it is our plan, as soon as all of those folders are approved, to continue to go ahead and issue vouchers so we can get people on the street searching for units. And so we do plan to take another 25 in the next couple of weeks. For anyone who applied on the waiting list, we are, in addition to pulling final eligibility, we are giving notices to all of the 500 that their application was selected and that it's been placed on the waiting list and so that they'll know what to do if they have any updates on addresses or any change in their household status. And yes, it's okay giving those letters out to the 500 minus the people that obviously have already come in by October 31st. Did you get any?
Instead of approximately half the applicants were from Michigan City, so the rest of the folks were all in areas.
A little bit of every area. So I want to say I don't have the exact number, but I would say majority. I think about half of the 995 on the waiting list were from the Michigan City area. Now, I don't, I did not take a look at out of when the lottery was done, how many of the 500 that was pulled because that was random. The software system just pulled those. So I didn't take a look at that number. But originally, out of the 995, about half were from the Michigan City area. Of course, then the next area was left on the board and then other the county and then Chicago and then we do have some that were just randomly from across the country. And so it is HUD's policy that anyone can apply, that anyone anywhere can apply. So we did get some that were far away. Any other questions about the HCV program? All right, for the property management, we have property manager Desiree Van Valens. And I was waiting to do this when I had my report, but because she's going to come before us, I just want you all to congratulate her because she has passed her first housing certification class. Desiree comes to us, she's been with us for about six or seven months now. She comes to us with about five years of property management experience. And so we're just teaching her the public housing portion. So congratulations, Desiree.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon. What I will be detailing is the report for Office 2025. For our waiting section here for public housing, we have 1,950 applicants. We have final eligibility of 39, withdrawn 34. For homeownership, we have 159 applicants, none withdrawn. Business activity, we have 254 with none withdrawn. For developments, I'm sorry, can I enter very quickly? If you notice, if you were to compare last month's report and this month's report for business activity, you'll see a drastic decrease in the number of applicants. And what happened is we're prepping to pull for business activity and what we noticed that we have multitude of duplicates households on the HCV, on the business activity waiting list. And so all duplicates were removed. No families were removed. So if you were out there twice, you still have, you know, you still have your name there. But that is the difference if you were to compare last month's report to this. For developments, for Lakeland Estates, we're at 84%. We have one vacant unit, seven mod units. Boulevard Gardens, we are at 78% with four vacant units, 17 mod units, one new admission. Harborside Homes, we're at 67%. We have two vacant units, three mod units. Harborside Duplexes, we're at 50%. We have two vacant units, one mod unit, one end of participation. Scattered Sites, we're at 75%. We have three mod units. Business Activities, we are at 58% with 11 vacant units. And then Work Orders, we have received for this report, 74. We closed out for this report, 131. Total outstanding, 461.
A question on the mods. The mods be contractor and when do we expect to get those back?
I am actually scheduled to walk with them tomorrow for confirmation for the violations. So we're hoping to get those very, very soon.
And by the end of next week if they pass?
Correct.
So we'll open those up certainly before that's meeting. We should see a change.
Definitely. Yes.
All right, very good. That's exciting.
Desiree didn't mention, but she already has a handful of families that are ready that are just waiting for that to be ready. So there's, especially at Lakeland. We have, do have a handful of families that were coming through. And I have to say, Desiree's been very meticulous, which is great. Something units at the conference turned their work shifts to the waiting. And so there's been a couple of other things that have been added on until Lakeland and the others. So there are, I want to say, you want to correct me, is about four or five families that you have ready or just waiting for you to get those units back for Lakeland?
I actually want to say like seven.
Okay.
So I have quite a few that are just ready to move in.
Don't be shy on this, Tammy.
All right, my name is Tammy Cook. And I'm finally at some end. And my, for the September financial summary, the Housing Choice Voucher. The Housing Assistant Payments funding for July was $172,256. The Housing Assistant Payments for July were $173,914. HCV Operation Reserves for July is $526,089. And the administrative fees that we earned for July was $15,001. We also earned administrative fees for July for portability, which is $722.34. And BMS was submitted timely and on schedule. Business Activity. As you can see, Business Activity had a negative net income for July of $61,431. And the reserve remains in a favorable position. For Public Housing, the net.
Could you maybe give us a little explanation on why we made it for the Business Activity?
So we've been, I've been working with the fee account. And they, for the administrative salaries, they were taking them all out of public housing. So she had to re... What's her name? Reallocate. Reallocate to spread the salary across the board. And also, I'm working with her because the general expenses were a little high, around $20,000. So we're working, I'm working with her to try to figure out where, you know, what how, where it could have been allocated to the wrong amount or to the wrong home building. For Public Housing, the operating expenses are pace operating income. And we are still working with reducing the aging of the tenant accounts receivables. And I just started entering in the help of Desiree, starting to put in repayment in the BMS. So that should help quite a bit. Any questions?
I don't have anything to add, but since we are under finances, the last month we had gone over the operating budget because we approved the budget.
Right.
And there was one additional, well, there were some additional details that I requested.
Yeah, that you requested that I had.
What's the status?
Totally dropped the ball on that for the non, for the two.
There were two different categories, yeah.
Right. Was it two or was it just?
I thought it was two. One was, I don't have the minutes of the agenda, the reports from last month, but one, it was a pie chart, it was a pie chart where something with the expenditures, the non.
The non-team.
The non-team and then something else, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're still working on that.
Okay, yes.
Right, okay.
My turn. Just to keep that with Tammy about the total balances, it's important for us, of course, to collect rents. We have, I can't even count how many outstanding balances that are old that had not been enforced. So we have given notices, I think we may have mentioned that the last meeting, we took the time to, first of all, reconcile to make sure that the statements were correct. And then now send out, we've been sending out statements since, I would say about February, correct statements. We are working to get those balances back. Desiree is working with residents who are willing to enter into payment agreements. And so we are working with families. There was a local program that was helping with paying rents. We submitted the 30-day notices to families who had outstanding balances. We did give them a copy of the flyer of the community so that they would be able to get some assistance. We're currently working on, I'm sorry, fiscal year beginning is 9/30/2025. We're currently working to prepare for the end-of-year activities. A lot on the plate for Tammy and finding her financial reports. We also have the HCV CMAP certification coming up. And that's pretty much the report part of, I'm sorry, the HCV program. I did mention already that Ms. Desiree received her certification. Again, very happy for her on that. We are scheduling a landlord lunch and learn for the HCV program. Now that we'll have all of our, quite a few voucher holders out searching, we wanted to work with our landlords again. So we have that planned for October 23rd. The notice is forthcoming. We've had a lot of complaints regarding security at Boulevard Gardens. And so what we've done is we have, basically have officers who are on patrol of us throughout, scattered throughout the week. We started that, I want to say, September 1st, I won't hold on to date, but it was around there to try to address some of the issues that we have. We had a couple pickups with our security doors not working. We had, I think at a building on Sixth Street, we just had one of the boards replaced. They were having some issues with their locks. We have that taken care of. I am aware of maybe one other on Seventh Street. We're working to get that handled. We are increasing the security, making sure that the doors are locked, encouraging people to let us know if they're not locked. Let us know if people are keeping them open. Desiree and I actually have the app on our phone. And so we try to monitor as much as we can, making sure that the doors are secured and noticing if there's any inconsistencies or long periods of time that they're held open. The other thing that we started back, I want to say in May, we noticed that there were a lot of satellite dishes just all over the place. And I think it was about almost 40. And what we did was we sent out notices to all the residents saying, "Play your satellite dish. Let us know which one is yours." And so we finally, just this past week or so, have been removing all of the old satellite dishes. Most of them were people who are not here anymore. So we're getting that process done and also sending out notifications to residents to let us know when we have one so we can approve it before it's installed. The rehab work is still going on. They are finishing up. Desiree has to do walk-throughs at Lakeland, but they have, they are working at the scatter sites and at the business activity units. I did speak with the contractor and they're expecting to be done with those properties by the end of the week. And we did know, pending maybe a punch list from Desiree. So he's expected that to be over twice. I do have positive news to report. We had two, not HCV, Public Housing Home Ownership of residents that completed the program and that we will be, we have already signed over the deed to them for their homes. So they have been in that program, I think it was set up as a 25-year program. And so we did go ahead and do that over to them. It was a very, very pleasant moment to see them go through that process. The only other thing that I have is that there were some complaints regarding our office hours. So I just wanted to reiterate, we are open Monday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 8 to 4. We are closed Wednesdays to the public. We do take phone calls. We're just trying, we're in here just trying to catch up and get some things caught up. Gives the staff a workday without as many interruptions. We are closed daily from 12 to 1:00. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Other than that, that's really all I have for the record. Was there any questions that anyone had of me?
So the agency, the authority did attend the, one of the community events room, where?
We have this this Saturday.
Oh, it's the Saturday.
It's the Saturday. And actually, the amount is incorrect. We've actually voided that check, we voided that check because that amount is incorrect. It's only supposed to be, it's only putting two tickets, so that's incorrect.
Okay.
But it is this, it's this Saturday.
Okay. And then I see on the financials that BP, High Risk Fee of 56101, what is that?
So that BP is our gas card. So the housing authority has gas cards for housing authority vehicles. And due to previous credit history, they, since we've been here prior, so it's coming here, the current staff, I should say, there was a high-risk fee on the credit card every month. So there must have been some time period that maybe you were paying on time?
That they assessed the fee?
So what it is, is every month, they're charging us an additional amount, like a high-risk fee due to the previous credit history.
Oh, huh.
Does that have to come off some?
Tammy, I'm trying.
I've never heard of that before.
Well, you know how it came, and how actually it came about is that when Tammy paid the bill, they said they were still outstanding. And she said, "What is it?" They need to pay the high-risk fee. And some of that's when we noted that, but that's when it is previous credit history.
Okay.
So hopefully that will.
Right.
Is it worth it to us to talk to them and consider just closing that out and giving it an Amoco card or something else?
I thought about that, but I have to do more research on it. And it might be, but BP is, you know.
Everywhere.
Now, Chairman Vincent, I mean, no disrespect, but there is no Amoco. Well, you know. You know what, I haven't heard of that yet. About a year, about a year ago, I was, I think in Mississippi or somewhere, and I was like, "What?" But if you remember, and this is probably way too much and I apologize, but the history was, it was standard. When I was a little girl, my mother used to always say, "There's a standard station." And I'd say, "What says Amoco?" And because it was the same symbol, it was the same logo. And so if I'm not mistaken, and someone had called me, but Amoco went to defeat me.
Yeah. So perfect, they did. Or it's a lemonade. How was the study with the dinosaur?
Sorry for the story. My staff always said that had to wait till the end.
And I'd like to follow up with a question on the security. There was a resident here talking about her board would not dispose properly. Is that what that, would you want to run over to one of his staff to look at that?
We did, we met after the meeting, but I thought it was pest control and I thought it was something else.
It was.
Pest control, what?
That was the main thing. So pest control.
With the deadbolt system, that is, I'm not able to just kind of go to the guards and purchase deadbolts. It has to be an upgrade of the entire lock system. So that'll have to be a capital improvement project. But yes, that's on my radar. I can't just go, if I went and bought deadbolts, then I'd have one key for every unit that we had.
But first, it doesn't work.
But I don't think it wasn't that the lock wasn't working. I don't, I think that it was.
The door wasn't screwed properly. Yeah, right. Right. It wasn't so much.
Well, I saw her yesterday at Shawna, was that yesterday? So yes, she actually came to the office and I walked, we know another issue. And she didn't mention it, but we'll just double-check. I hope you'll let me check.
That's your report?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to attorney report.
Commissioners, I don't have a lot. I would report actually though, if you take Highway 20 out here and you go through Western Avenue and South End, there is an empty seat. So it's not that far of a jump to decide to get that car.
I wonder, don't you use the video?
Ah, you probably can, yeah. As far as my report, I know that, you know, Tremel Lee, and I'm still trying to repeat under me a little bit, I know there's a couple pending litigation matters and some evictions that may be in process. I will have a better report next month on all of that. I'll take you up to speed. I believe that one of your pending litigation matters is about to settle for a pretty minimal amount of, it's been authorized by the insurance company, I do, I do know that. We have some conversations with the other attorney in the next week or so. We'll probably be able to report next month if that one stays clear. That's the little bookcase. Other than that, I don't really, I don't have any reports. I would just ask, I'm going to have to leave to go virtually cover another meeting here, so I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Finch. I just wanted to see, though, I know we have a lot of resolutions here. I think they're mostly policy-oriented and they're pretty straightforward. So I just wanted to ask the board if you have any questions about any of those in particular that I can answer before I run out. I think they're, I think they're pretty straightforward, but I want to give you that opportunity before I go.
Through the board or you?
No, I looked through them. I think they're straightforward too. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on them, whether you're going to approve them or not.
Okay. All right, thank you. On behalf of now, Attorney Finch will be here in case there's a problem. And I don't anticipate what.
Take care.
Thank you.
Welcome.
There you go. You're on TV.
Moving on to new business. First order of new business is resume 2025-14, authorization to approve HCV payment standards.
All right, so I should be able to explain this pretty well. Payment standards are the maximum amounts that can be approved for units in the voucher program. They're derived from HUD's fair market rents. Fair market rents are usually come out or updated every October with HUD. This year, they have them posted a little bit early, so we were able to kind of jump ahead of it. Payment standards typically are allowed to be set within the range of 90 to 110%. During COVID was the first time we were actually able to set standards within 120%. And so since COVID, HUD has still allowed us to do that as long as we were able to be in compliance with PIH Notice 2024-34. And so we were. And so the posts payment standards that you have are showing the increases for the HCV program. And so basically, again, the payment standards are the maximum amount that we can pay towards rent and utilities for any HCV unit. Any questions?
Do these rents, does this reflect what our landlords want? Do these undercutting buyings for the reason of filling vouchers?
So they're actually pretty comparable numbers for our area. So what happens is HUD puts out the FMR, which is the number here. And so we're able to set the payment standard anywhere. And so we're able to set the payment standard anywhere from typically ninety to one hun- one hundred and ten. We have a group that do one twenty. And so the payment standard is actually towards rent and, uh, utilities. So typically, let's say for a two bedroom unit that's, um, sorry, two bedroom is thirteen eighteen, what we would do is when, if the landlord was requesting maybe eleven hundred dollars in rent and the tenant paid all the utilities, as much as possible, we want the rent plus the utilities to be equal or less than the payment standard. Um, and in doing so ensures that, um, resident, um, will participate and we pay approximately thirty percent of their income towards rent utilities. A little bit of H C D calculations there for you, but, but, but what happens is, so typically as a landlord, if you're charging the payment standard, uh, so for example, for a three bedroom, I would not advise a landlord to charge.
Seventeen forty five.
Seventy, yeah, so that's very, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, so seventeen forty five. So, so typically, um, uh, that is, you take, if a landlord is charging seventeen forty five, then I would expect they would, that that would include utilities. So, so typically, a, a, a rent at seventeen forty five would be too high for the voucher program. So typically, we want the, the, the rent plus the utilities to be equal or less than that for the tenant to pay, uh, thirty percent. Anytime you, in any amounts that go over that amount, now the tenant is, their, their portion is increasing. So all the programs really focus on the tenant paying thirty percent of their income towards your rent utilities. So if you go over the payment standard, then they're paying more. So this is the cap that the Hou- that the HUD says for the housing authority to use for each, so, so this is a necessity that the tenant is gonna get. And, and it, and they may not all go towards their, uh, rent, it, because it's including their utility allowance. I have no idea, I was made to do this.
This is just an update, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I know, but it's just an update for the, for the twenty twenty six, uh, twenty twenty six, yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, if there's any questions, I, I can assist you, because you have to have a guideline or a cap. Um, and then that's what that cap is, but sometimes it's misconstrued that that's what you should be charging for rent. And you should actually come under that.
Any other questions? The roll on resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina?
Um, Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Greer?
Your eyes. Resolution is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen, authorization to approve public housing flat rents.
So this is not exactly the same, but very similar for the public housing program. So, uh, uh, in the public housing program, participants are, are required to pay thirty percent of their income towards, uh, uh, rent utilities. What happens is as their rate would increase, so, uh, uh, their, their thirty percent may, um, exceed maybe what a market rate here is. So let's say, um, let's say I have a very nice salary. Um, a flat rent, it, it caps the amount that the tenant will pay. So let's say, um, I'm in a two bedroom unit and market rate is probably, um, let's, uh, uh, the market rate is, is, is eight hundred dollars for a, I guess I shouldn't, it's eight hundred dollars for a two bedroom unit. I'm sorry, I said that completely wrong. Um, let's go back here. So the, the flat rent, let's say a two bedroom unit is, uh, twelve hundred dollars. Uh, a flat rent of ninety, um, nine twenty two would cap what the public housing resident would pay. So again, this is something that we do every year. Um, HUD uses the fair market rents, is what we have listed here. But instead of using the same percentages in the voucher program, we use eighty percent for the public housing program. Um, and it, it really, I don't know, am I saying this right? Or am I not? Um, participants are to pay thirty percent of their income. As they begin to increase their, their rent, their, their income, their rent will continue to rise. The flat rent caps that, so that if my thirty percent now is eighteen hundred dollars, I'm not paying eighteen hundred dollars for a two bedroom unit, I'm paying the flat rent.
Got you.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
And so the flat rent is only applying to families who, uh, they're, so if, if I'm, uh, it's only applying to families with a higher rent amount. So if I'm, if thirty percent of my income is a hundred dollars, then I'm paying the hundred dollars, not the flat rent. The flat rent is only applicable for families who have a very high, uh, thirty percent of their income. Because, uh, think of it this way, if, if I was paying eighteen hundred dollars to pay my two bedroom unit in public housing, I probably would just go out to rent. And so this is, this, this, this allows them to be able to stay in the unit, um, and, um, at a more reasonable, we, we, we wouldn't want them paying eighteen hundred dollars for a unit that that's not worth it, if their income will continue to rise.
So fix rent, like a fix rent?
Yes.
Really fix them up?
Yes. I don't know why I couldn't think of that. This should be really easy.
So when you, when you say the thirty percent of rent and utilities, are they paying thirty percent of their utilities themselves as well?
So it's, it's, it would depend on where you live. So for example, in, uh, Lakeland and Boulevard Garden, we pay all the utilities. And so the tenants are just paying whatever thirty percent of their income, uh, to be there. But like, for example, if I lived, um, in maybe Scatter Site and I was responsible to pay utilities, um, I'm responsible to pay thirty percent of my income towards rent utilities. I may be paying less than thirty percent to the housing authority, because, because I'm, it's being considered that I'm paying the rest, the remainder of it to, to, to Nisco. So, so I may have a, um, a thirty percent of two hundred dollars, but maybe my rent is only a hundred dollars. I'm paying a hundred to the housing authority, then the other hundred, I'm considering they're giving me credit, if you will, that I'm paying my utility bill.
So the housing authority would give the credit for the utilities?
No, we would just not charge the tenants.
We would charge them?
Uh, we would charge them two hundred dollars. Right, so if their, if their thirty percent is two hundred dollars and they, and I'm just using that, it's not, uh, it's just using as an example, but if their thirty percent is two hundred dollars and they have utilities to pay, they pay a hundred to the housing authority for rent, and then we would just know that they're paying their utility bill. Now, sometimes people get a little confused, because we have what we call utility reimbursement, which is different. So what happens is, um, 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 I'm trying to confuse myself. I'm trying to figure out how to explain it. So it, so, so for, for a utility reimbursement, um, uh, uh, uh,
Basically eligible.
Of course, but, so we have an allowance, we have utility allowance, and we have a utility reimbursement.
Right.
I'll give you an example. The two of you could live in the same exact unit and have the same utilities, definitely have the same utility allowance, but based on income, um, someone would get a utility reimbursement check. So it's kind of like, after your subsidy is paid, there's something left. And with that something left, we give that back to you to help you pay your utilities.
Right. I say that because a lot of landlords, they don't, they don't, they don't do written utilities together, because.
Oh, it's rare.
Usually, so.
It, 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 it's typically rare in the H C D program that we have. I was actually surprised when I came here in Lakeland and Boulevard Gardens, um, where, where we were paying their utilities, because it's not something that you see, um, very often at all. Um, and so it just, um, the, uh, the, uh, with the H C D program, it helps you to take into consideration that you have utilities to pay. So when you pay, when you pay your flat rent, if you live in a unit, uh, for the flat rent, you're paying the flat rent towards your rent, and then you also pay your utilities. So there would be no utility allowance with the flat rent.
Okay, roll on resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina?
Um, Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Greer?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Resolution twenty twenty five fifteen is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen, authorization to approve vacancy reduction change order number five.
Well, hopefully I got this number. Um, it's a little bit lower than the other change orders that we've had. Um, these were some change orders for Lakeland, um, at Desert Ray completed contractor and noted that there were two things that needed to be done in each one of these units, and, um, that, uh, the cost was, uh, uh, ended up being about, uh, one thousand seventy five and seventy days. So we're just requesting that, um, the board approve, um, the, uh, change order, um, for, uh, Lakeland. So this is the contract that we had previously approved and they're working on. And then this, um, was, uh, just a, a punch list, uh, that was completed and added to the punch list, um, that we were, uh, that needed to be added. Contingencies, contingencies.
Out of scope of work from the original contract, though.
Well, not, not, not out of the scope of work, but I would say that hadn't been, um.
Unforeseen thing?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any questions? The roll on resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina?
Um, Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Greer?
Resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen, authorization to approve write-off policy.
So for, um, our programs, HUD requires us to write off bad debt. Debt is not collectible. And so what you have before us is a policy of how we're going to write off that bad debt. As we talked about a little earlier for the public housing program, um, it's important that we keep our tenant accounts receivables at a, um, reasonable amount, that's towards the housing authority based on that. And so HUD also says that when clients are no longer being assisted, you can write those balances off. So here we are at the end of the year, um, and we are, um, changing, we're, we're actually creating a write-off policy, um, for the housing authority in order for us to, um, write off on, um, an annual basis. The policy says that after a debt has been uncollectible for ninety days, we will write it off. And then it's applicable to the voucher program, the, uh, public housing program, as well as business activity. Uh, it is vital for the public housing program. Also, too, some of the policies that seems that you'll see, things that were not in place, um, that was part of, um, our requirement from HUD to, um, implement these policies as well, because they want.
This is a policy we didn't have before?
Wasn't written. Or we can find it, I'm not sure it's what.
Any questions on us?
Is that, if somebody was rich, who was speaking on?
So yes, so, so what I will do, uh, the other thing is, so these are clients that are no longer pro- on the program that we've attempted to get the debt. Uh, it doesn't make, it doesn't not change the fact that the clients owe the money. So if they were to come back, we can still, um, we can still, um, collect it. It just will be changed that, and if you wanna, it just takes it off our books, so that it's not, um, sitting there as, um, as an outstanding receivable.
The roll on resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen, please.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina?
Um, Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Greer?
Uh.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen, authorization to approve cost allocation plan.
The cost allocation plan, uh, basically sets, uh, a standard as to how we're gonna allocate our costs to our programs. As you're aware, we have public housing, uh, we have housing towards voucher program, and we have business activities. All of those programs have their own funding, uh, when, um, and, and we, how we pay for, um, the utilities, paper, or anything that we use, pens and so forth, we have to allocate how, what program is paying and how are they paying. Um, some things are, are pretty, um, uh, straightforward, they're the, the direct costs. Um, if, um, the H C D program is creating binders or booklets or H C D tenants, it can be charged directly to H C D. However, for example, when you order coffee, we're not going to come and figure out how many pieces of paper we're charged to what program. So what happens is you have to have a method of how you're going to, um, to pay. So typically, what you do is you look at the size of the program, uh, for each program, for public housing, H C D, and this is activity, and then you have a percentage of how you're going to, um, should have been looking at the form. That's exactly right. Uh, page three, appendix A, gives you the samples of how, um, the housing authority methodology would need in order to, um, allocate the charges to each account. So pretty, pretty much when we receive a bill, we have to determine in the office what program pays for this. Some things are direct, specifically, yes, that's public housing, some things have to be shared amongst all the programs. And so this plan is going to tell you what we're gonna do with the situation, whether it's indirect cost, indirect cost, what type of, of, of cost it is, and how we're going to, um, how we're going to, uh, allocate the cost, as well as, um, the last sheet to give you an example, whether it's unit and vouchers, or staff time, or, or, uh, uh, office space. So typically, the, for a pretty good example, we buy paper, we take a percentage from the H C D program, a percentage from the public housing program, and a percentage of business activity. The larger program pays, pays, pays the most.
Any questions?
Attorney Finch, you can help me. I'm assuming I'm doing all right. Yes, right. And we just had to have a policy, um, in place on how we're going to do that, um, and, and, uh, and, uh, uh, update.
The roll on resolution twenty twenty five.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina?
Um, Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Greer?
Uh.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen, authorization to approve financial internal control process.
Uh, you can see we have a running thing here, finance. Um, again, a, a pretty standard policy, we had to have something in place, um, to say how we're going to, uh, monitor our finances. Um, if there's any specific questions, concerns, um, Tammy, if you have any comments or any points, I'm gonna take a second break.
Any questions from the board? Take a roll on resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina?
Um, Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Greer?
Resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty, authorization to approve public housing tenant account write-offs.
I'm so happy you approved that policy. So, so here we have our tenant, tenant write-offs. Um, we have write-offs for Boulevard Garden, Lakeland Estates, all of our developments, Scatter Sites, Harbor Side Homes, Home Ownership. Um, these are the, the liquid, uh, tenant balances or bad debt, uh, for families that are no longer on the program. Uh, typically, we would not have this link, however, I believe we're going, we're going back until, um, twenty seventeen. So there's quite a bit here. These is uncollect, uncollectible debt, uncollectible debt, um, which will take off our books and will help our tenant accounts receivables.
These are still money, still owed?
Correct.
And could be collected and, uh.
Correct, so if the families were to come back, wanting to be, um, enter the programs, they would have to pay the balancing pool, um, before that they would be available.
And do I correct it, just before they enter any program across the country?
Yes, so I'm glad you asked that. We have, HUD has a system called debts owed. And that information can be entered into, will be, not if, the, the information will be entered into debts owed. Um, and so therefore, if I decide to go to, um, California and apply of their housing authority, once I'm going through the other billing process, they go in and, uh, run my social security number, and bam, it will pop up, and any housing authority letting them know that they also owe the subsidy.
Well, hopefully, some of the ones that are substantially outstanding, such as like in the double digits, nineteen thousand, eighteen thousand, will never get to that point, because we'll go through the eviction process, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So actually, it's good to kind of wipe this slate clean and get this, and going forward, we won't see this.
Absolutely. Uh, now, what I will say is that we do have quite a few number of families that are on the program with high balances, which are, our targets are high. Um, however, um, Um, however, um, I, we, we, that's why we're working with families to do payment grants. How much can you pay? Um, because at the same time, we don't want the companies vacant. So we're doing so many at a time.
Such as one that they moved out May first, that has seventeen thousand? That's one of the ones that's more recent that we could have actually been proactive with.
Uh, most of that balance has been, um, that wasn't a new balance. It was, yeah, that was, yeah. Again, there's, there's four, but sometimes there's a balancing act.
Yeah.
It's definitely a balancing act because again, I, I think, I can't really have a, I mean, I guess I could, um, we don't want, um, have these programs be vacant.
Right. I know some of these dropped, fell between the cracks.
There was no enforcement.
That's why I said a lot of it fell between the cracks.
There was no, there was absolutely no enforcement. And one of the challenges that we had, and I'm just trying to say us, but one of the challenges that we had was first of all, we had to reconcile. Um, the system statement. So, so remember, for the first almost year, um, our, our finances were not reconciled. It wasn't until December of twenty twenty four when we first got a true statement of what our, um, uh, account toward, when the E account finally balanced for the year. And so then in, um, so then from December until February, March, is, then internally, we reconciled to see what is correct. Because we had a lot of savings that we just got correct. So we, we made, we made adjustments that needed to be made. And then started to, the tenant balances out. And so the, the balance, the HCV that was as of May. So after we reconciled in March, we, we gave notices and so that person opted to may eight.
So, so can we leave the account numbers represented in the tenant?
Yes.
In the computer, not in the box?
Good question. I'm saying that, that, that's it.
They better be in the box.
And I know, I understand what you're saying about, we wanna work with folks and tenants because we don't want empty units. However, we don't wanna continue to take the loss. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about those five hundred applicants out there. So we have plenty of good people that need homes that will come in and pay. So if people are, are behind.
As different programs, but yes, right. The, the theory is the same.
There's good residents out there. We need to find those.
You came on right on. You're gonna be busy. Don't go anywhere now.
Any other questions?
Well, and also to us, uh, us doing, um, enforcement, there's a lot of things here that just weren't enforced. These violations were almost unheard of. Um, and, and just so you know, there has been no late fees even accumulated. They, uh, uh, at some point it was paused. And so we, Tammy and I went, oh, we didn't wanna add, we didn't want to put them back on to increase the charges as of now. We wanted to try to get it under control. Well, eventually, late fees will be added back, um, to tenant accounts, of course. So we'll be noticing all of that ahead of time. Um, but, but yeah, yeah, it's, um, but you're right, absolutely.
So the role on resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina? Commissioner Benny? Commissioner Greer?
Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one authorization to approve HCV tenant account write-offs.
So pretty much the same thing just for the HCV, um, program. For the HCV program, um, uh, the only big difference is it's not rent. So families in the HCV program typically, um, should have no, any reason to owe the housing authority money. However, if they have unreported income or income that was reported, there was some kind of delay that started work in June and I didn't make it down to the housing authority. So these centers are reporting, um, and that's how, uh, clients in HCV program end up owing money. Um, so the balances you'll usually see in the HCV program are typically, um, a little bit smaller. Uh, because it's not rent. Any questions?
The role on, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina? Commissioner Benny? Commissioner Greer?
Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one is approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two authorization to approve. Be a tenant write-off business.
Again, pretty much the same, um, item, um, just for the business activity. Any questions?
The role on resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two.
Chairman Vincent?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reina? Commissioner Benny? Commissioner Greer?
Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two is approved.
Done the resolution, finally. That was a lot. Six steps.
Moving on to old business, any old business? Commissioner's remarks? Commissioner, any thing to talk about? Hearing none? Want to give motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Aye. You need to adjourn.